Welcome you all to the regular meeting of the Calamasa City Council. Monday, June 19th at 6:00 PM. Anybody wishing to speak to the council? If you could please give us Darlene a speaker slip. And we'll go from there. You want to give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
We will excuse Mr. Cervantes. He is off relaxing in the sun someplace, if that's alright with everybody.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
I'm here. Then we have City Manager Kobo. City Attorney Burrow, welcome back. City Clerk Girdes. Finance Director Reed. Planning Director Lucia. Public Works Associate Engineer Shakari E. And then we have City Unionist Thornton. Fire Chief O'Connell. And Sheriff Lieutenant Olson. And since you've been vacationing, Mr. Olson, or Lieutenant, or whatever you want to be called. Would you please lead us in the pledge, please? Okay, approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. Are there any changes need to be made on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
There are, there is one item. We are going to pull item number, we're going to postpone item number 19 from the agenda.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the change.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, we got a four zip. Communications from the public.
As you know, I'm a advocate for senior citizens and especially sensitive receptors. Most of the time when I come up here, I'm going to be advocating for them and giving a viewpoint that I believe is intelligent and serves the purpose of not placating any cause, but the sense of urgency that it takes to protect your citizens. Who quite frankly, don't think that you care about them and you're going to sell them out to the warehouses. So I hear that the environmental impact report might be coming out soon, so I want to, on my opposition to the Valley North, Oak Valley North project, my answer to the notice of preparation. I'm going to read a little bit here. "In my address to the Riverside Board of Supervisors, I explain that technically every diesel truck with the trailer inbound to the warehouse is the project. With this contents and toxic pollution generated by the project is environmental and detrimental to our residents of Rancho Calamaesa and Sharon Dale and to their health, safety, welfare, and future quality of life." Sorry, I'm not feeling well tonight. But anyway, when I was trying to come back from Beaumont today, I noticed that in Beaumont, cars are in the turn lanes when they're trying to get, make a turn with the green light. Traffic is backed up big time. And with the ramp closed on the interchange on Cherry Valley Boulevard, it's making it very difficult for our people in Rancho Calamaesa and Sharon Dale to move about freely, which is their constitutional right. Under the Constitution, we're guaranteed to move freely. This project is going to inhibit those rights because right now, the traffic that's coming off of the 10 is backed up on Calamaesa Boulevard. And it's, it's a hassle. It's a hassle for our residents. If that's what's going on right now, because you're doing some construction in the interchange, what do you think it's going to be like? With trucks, one after another, turning off their engines after five minutes, starting them up again? Diesel exhaust in the air is negative energy, over and over and over again. It's untenable. Thank you.
Consent calendar? Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, items one through 17.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's all in favor. Okay, we move right along to Mr. Tony, you're going to talk to us tonight?
Well, thank you, Mayor Davis, council. Pleasure again to come before you. Just want to share some status report for the Calamaesa Chamber. Our June breakfast was well attended. Packed house over Cafe Royale. Mickey Valdivia was the guest speaker from the Sangre Gruneo Pass Water Agency and the Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Recreation Department Foundation. Is that all of it?
Yeah.
Mickey had a great presentation on the future of the water in the Pass area. He also spoke about how the aquifers are being replenished through the sites and that a, an agreement has been reached with Calamaesa to add another catch basin by the Fourth Street Park. So that's going to go forward, from what I understand on that. So that'd be great that we are recharging our aquifers here also. He also spoke about the different amenities that the Parks and Rec Department have to offer in the area, about the Danny Thomas area that's going to be developed through the Parks and Rec Department. So that's going to be a nice area for our, our future playtimes. The scholarship tea review, it took place in May. We had a successful turnout. It was at the end of May, so that's what we're talking about now. It was at the Edward Dean Museum and Haas Bistro provided the luncheon for us. Wendy was in attendance as well as others. And we gave out nine scholarships to local students. So five of them were thousand dollar scholarships and then four of them were five hundred dollar scholarships. And it was to an array of different fields that these students were moving into. So looking forward to next years. We've already been working on getting some grants and some donations to help us do this again. I've always said that the, it would be really, really cool to give, you know, like 10, $10,000 scholarships, have $100,000 to give away to, to these kids because really a $500 scholarship, a thousand dollar scholarship, you know, it might pay for their books or some of their books or maybe a, you know, a month at the, wherever they're staying. But it doesn't go very, very far in today's cost of education. Upcoming events? As council knows, we will be partnering with the City of Calamaesa again to, but we're doing things a little differently for the state of the city. We look forward to hosting the first time the State of the City Community Street Fair on October 7th. It'll be held at the Mesa, is it Verde? Mesa Verde? Mesa View Middle School. And Darlene and Donae are getting started on planning for that, so we're looking forward to that. I think it's going to be really exciting to do things a little differently that way. More details to come. Then in October, on October 21st, we'll be hosting our annual Night at the Races fundraiser, where it is video horse racing, raffle prizes, photo booth, food provided by Woody's Barbecue. And all the proceeds from that event will, will help benefit the scholarship fundraiser. Tickets are available at the, on the Chamber website right now, so if you're interested in getting your tickets early. We are pleased to, to learn that the council approved the annual Get Your Lights On Christmas, Calamaesa Christmas Parade. Thank you very much for that. We look forward to working with the city again to make that a spectacular event. And that'll be held on December 2nd, starting at 5:00 PM. So those of you that own businesses on Calamaesa Boulevard, know that you're going to lose traffic at about 3:30. Again, thank you for, for that approval on that. In membership, we have, we had three new members to join so far this month. We had 11 members renew and we have a grand total of 148 members in the Chamber. Any questions for me?
No questions.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony. Sheriff Captain Comments and Reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So from June 5th through June 18th, the deputies working in Calamaesa and the community service officer handled 262 calls for service. 24 of those were traffic violations. 18 calls for service where deputies responded to alarm calls, both residential and commercial. There were seven misdemeanor theft calls. Two felony theft calls. The deputies recovered three stolen vehicles. And was also investigated for fraud calls. And one residential burglary call. That's it for the, for the stats unless you guys have any questions?
What area was the burglar, or you?
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know where it was. Not sure.
Any questions?
The stolen vehicles, were there, were they vehicles that were locked and stolen or?
So when our crime analysis person does the report, they, if they're stolen vehicles out of Calamaesa, they include it. And there's a zero next to it, so they must have been recoveries that the vehicle was stolen in another city.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Total responses year-to-date are 769, as opposed to last year's same date, being 821. Had a little bit of a dip-off this year. Total medical aids are 527, for a total of 68% of our total calls average. We've had 177 miscellaneous calls or public assist. 31 mutual aid responses given. Nine mutual aid responses received. And of our total responses out of the city, we've been counseled 13 times. Couple of current events that we have going on. Currently, we have pre-positioned a unit on the south side of the freeway during the exchange closure. Thankfully, the call volume has been down this weekend. We haven't seen a whole lot of activity on that side of the freeway. We are planning up staffing pattern for the 4th of July holiday coming up, taking a look at wind, weather, terrain, all of that, and going to pre-pow a unit. We're still continuing with our weed abatement and our fuel reduction program citywide. Got a lot of good compliance, but we still have some areas to work on. And this last week, I'm happy to report that I did the final inspection and acceptance for Calamaesa Truck 1, our ladder truck. Beautiful machine, passed everything. We had a few minor fixes, but it's been taken over to the equipment outfitter, or it's expected, lead time on that is six to eight weeks. I don't see it taking that long. We don't really have that much to mount on it, but you know how businesses go sometimes. And subject to your questions, that's the end of my report.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm getting excited about your truck. I keep answering. Where is it? Okay, Mayor and Councilmembers reporting of county and regional meetings. John?
I don't have anything. I was not required to attend any meetings.
Linda?
Yes, I have a couple. On June 7th, I attended the RTA committee meetings for Budget and Finance and also Admin and Operations. One of the key things for RTA is they get their, the fuel for their, for their buses through alternative sources and that gives reward for the reduction of carbon output. That's, that's what they're trying to do to get to, to green, green space. And also, if you have kids going to UCR or Cal Baptist or LA La Sierra University, RTA has approved bus passes for them to, to use to go to school. And that's it for RTA. And then I also attended, this is a biggie, RCTC Commission Meeting where the mayor and our city manager, Will, attended. And the City of Calamaesa won a competitive project for $5.2 million for the realignment of Calamaesa Boulevard. This is a big deal because we, I think this is the first time we've received a competitive award like that. It was, it was very competitive. The, the process was, was, the criteria for, for winning was very strict and so we, we won. And so that was a good thing. And, and it's also, it's considered a priority award. That means the money will be given, we will be, we will draw it down on those funds through 2024. So we'll be able to use the money right away. And then also, in the work that RCTC does, it doesn't affect us directly here in our city, but Riverside County received funding in the amount of 44.5 million for two projects in, in the mid-city area. One is to reduce the fatalities on Ramona Expressways. If you've ever driven over there, you know that it's very, it's one lane each direction is very dangerous to drive through there. So they put in a median, the project put in a median there. And also, they added two tracks to the Paris Valley Metro Rail line. RCTC owns nine Metro Rail stations and so, and maintains them. So that's, if you're, also again, if you're going through there, that's an alternative way to get through instead of coming, if you're going west to Los Angeles, to go that way and catch the train. And then the City of Beaumont also received an award of $33.5 million. And that's for the Trade Quarter Enhancement Program. It's through, funding is through SB 1. And that's a big, a big win for the Riverside County. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
Yes, I attended an Admin and Finance meeting for WR cog on June the 14th. We had a Clean Cities Coalition Activities Update. The Clean Cities Coalition has partnered with GTI Energy, Heavy Duty Hydrogen Vehicle Manufactured Nicola and six other coalitions to participate in the H2LA project. The project will develop a flexible, scalable plan for an investment-ready hydrogen fueling along the I-10 from Houston to LA. That was kind of interesting. Anyway, and then they also went over IRN. They're going to be having orientation for the IRN in our area. Will be in Banning on, let's see, in August. And the date has, is to be determined. They haven't figured that out yet, but they're doing orientations throughout the county. So Banning and Beaumont and Calamaesa will all be in August, I believe. And the General Assembly is coming up, June 29th. And then WR cog and the Admin and Finance will be dark in July. So that's it.
Thank you. With that, I'll move right along to public hearings. I will open up item number 18 and whose, is that yours, Will?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is to consider, was for the second reading of Ordinance Number 390, adopting the county's animal ordinance, with some exceptions to make it more comparable to what the city currently has. The first reading took place on May 15th. And when you have, when you're, when you adopt a, an ordinance by reference, so we're doing it by reference to the county ordinance, the public hearing actually takes place during the second reading rather than the first. The Urgency Ordinance that was also adopted on May 15th will go into effect July 1st for Animal Control Services. And Ordinance 390 will go into effect 30 days from today, on July 19th, at which time the Urgency Ordinance would lapse. Also on, on this item, is we're, we're recommending approval for a contract with the county for animal services effective July 1st. The contract will be based on actual services used and rather than, because the cost of an animal control officer full-time would be in the range of about $280,000 and that is not necessary for our level of service, so we're just billed on an ad needed basis. The annual estimated cost is $61,000. And this includes $6,000 for spay neuter and vaccination clinics. Also, as part of today's agenda, item number six, the council approved a $7,500 grant from the state for a free spay and neuter clinic, so that'll allow us to provide two of those in the next fiscal year. So the $6,000 that was budgeted for clinics can also be used for, could be used for vaccination clinics. So we could, you know, theoretically have quarterly clinics that we'd alternate between a spay and neuter clinic and a vaccination clinic in our area. They do those through mobile, so they bring a mobile unit out to Calamaesa and we do it locally, so we can set up an area in the city to do that. At the beginning of the contract, when we go into effect July 1st, our shelter, our sheltering will take place at the Thousand Palms Shelter. Not ideal, it's, you know, quite a ways away from us, but the two options were Thousand Palms and Harupa Valley. The staff from Animal Control comes out of San Jacinto. They do have a shelter in San Jacinto, however it is closed, but the county's fiscal 23-24 budget includes funds to reopen the San Jacinto Shelter, which is what the city would use. So the Thousand Palms Shelter will be a temporary solution for us until the San Jacinto Shelter reopens again. So that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You got any questions? Okay. Is there a representative here from Animal Control? I don't see anybody, but. And I have nobody wishing to give us public testimony. At least I have no slips. With that, I will close the public testimony. And you guys, have you got anything to say about this, or? Alright, could I get a motion?
I'll move to approve agreement for animal control field and licensing services between the City of Calamaesa and the County of Riverside.
As far as that motion, do you want to have the second reading and adoption of Ordinance 390?
Yes, thank you for that.
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none? Okay, we're talking about, Lieutenant Olson, you're in trouble here. No. John had asked about forming an ad hoc committee to review the Sheriff's Services and contracts with Riverside County. We're going to form an ad hoc committee if everybody is in agreement with them. You know, and it's, first I'll ask, is everybody in agreement with that?
Do we have any information about it, other than?
Ad hoc committee? That's what we're doing is discussing, you know, our relationship with, and it's just like we have with the, the Fire Department now. You know, and it's just, we have people that we can, if there is a question, we'll, the ad hoc committee will go over it and then they will come back to the council and tell us what's going on.
I'd like to be on that committee.
I knew that one. And John would like to be on that committee.
That's correct.
You guys have any problems with that?
No.
Okay. So there you have your committee. And do we have to vote on this, or make a motion?
It's not legally required, but you could, you could have a motion if you want.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to have the John Mann and Wendy Hewitt on the ad hoc committee, starting as soon as this, this piece of paper signed or whatever.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mayor and councilmembers comments and reports? Anything? Whatever turns you on, John?
Well, I appreciate the ad hoc committee. I'm looking forward to kind of taking, taking a look at our services, you know, as our city has grown and I know their calls for service have increased over the years. And with that, you know, response time has slowed understandably, so I think it'll give us, you know, a fresh look at everything and kind of help us make some informed decisions moving forward as far as our police service goes, so I appreciate it.
Okay. You got anything to say?
Yeah, I do. I attended the Flag Day that the Alex puts on every year. It was a ceremony, there were about 10 speakers. It was a very emotional presentation, as always. The Alex does a very great job there. Also, attended the Calamaesa Breakfast Meeting. It was standing room only, it was, it was a packed house and Mickey Valdivia puts on a great presentation. Also, our Lions Club here in Calamaesa, the Breakfast Lions Club, puts out flags on Flag Day, as well as 13 other holidays during the year, weather permitting. We put flags out at around 6 o'clock in the morning, take them down around 4:00. And so in Calamaesa and Yucapu, so that's, that was very nice too as well. And then I also attended on the 15th Edison's Wildfire Workshop. It was held in Fontana, the Senior Center. I brought back a lot of information for the community, for things like discounts on your bill, programs available to people through Edison. I brought a lot of information. I brought, I think, one of everything. And so I talked to our city manager and we are going to get this information from Edison and put it on our website, so that everybody in the community can be, have access to this information. It's really good information. Will, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, the, the, we got a similar presentation at the WR cog tech, Technical Advisory Committee meeting last week. Again, very good information on fire dangers and the PSPS, which is the Public Safety Preventative Shutdown, I think is what it's called. And so, yeah, we, and we may have, I'm going to talk to our, our representative, Eileen Flores, and we may have her come out and do kind of a condensed version of presentation for a council meeting in the near future.
Wendy?
I didn't attend anything, but I did, I forgot to ask, Tony, who's at the next breakfast
Yeah, it was my bad. You know, the one time to forget something like that, right?
Right.
Uh, so, uh, city manager Will Golball will be our, uh, guest speaker for July. And that'll be the second Tuesday of July at Cafe Royale. Welcome to show up at seven thirty, the meeting starts at eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And I also wanted to mention, you know, it is becoming fire season, so if you see anything, say something, you know, there's people out there that are kinda crazy about things, so wanna keep our eyes open, watch what's going on. That's it.
Okay, that's the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, the Fourth is coming up. People get a little crazy with, uh, their sparklers a hundred foot up in the air. So it, it's, uh, please be careful. You know, I get up on top of the hill just to see if my place is gonna burn down. So it, it's, that, that's my, my Fourth of July. But I'd want people to know that the snakes are out and I haven't seen any rattlesnakes, but I've seen every other variety, you know, on my property. And it's, uh, I've seen some really big racers and things like that, you know, like ten footers. You know, I've seen a big Rosie boa, you know, but, uh, so far no rattlesnakes. But, uh, be warned that they are out and they can, they can hit anyplace like the heights behind me and everything else. If there's water in the lawn or something like that, you'll see them out there crawling around getting water. You know, so be careful. And I hope you all have a, a good Fourth. With that, uh, no, the manager has nothing to add, I take it? And you got anything to say there, Will? I mean, Mr. [inaudible].
Pursuant to Government. Section five forty-nine, five seven point six. The City Council will not go into a closed session to have a conference with labor negotiators with respect to all employees except for the superintendent.
Thank you, sir. We'll adjourn right now to the closed session. And thank you for attending.